3:30, we're going to call this meeting to order. We certainly appreciate everyone being here. I see Mr. Dwayne Rice back there with media. I certainly appreciate your being here. And I don't see anyone else with the media here. We certainly appreciate your being here and covering this. This is our official clock. Y'all can look at your watches, and I'm sure half of y'all in here have a different time. The big one back there has a different time. So this is going to be the clock we're going to go by. And the only reason I mention that is because somebody last meeting said that we started early. Their clock was different than the one that we utilized. So I apologize to you if your clock does not say 5:30 on your watch. But this is the one that we will use. We're going to invite or call on now Commissioner Mosley. Think he has a special guest that he's going to introduce so to lead us in the invocation and the pledge. I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Mosley.
Good afternoon. We're going to ask Reverend Larry Cohen if he would come forward and lead us in for tonight. He pastors in the community here, and I would very much appreciate his stand. And we will come to hold him here. I'll put him right here. I talk loud enough, I don't hear the mic.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we come now. We come before you, Father, realizing that you are our Father. And, Father, you knows what we need, when we need it, and how we need it. But, Father, we, in these times of day, it has become hard. We see wars and rumors of wars. Israel, Ukraine, we are fighting each other. But, Father, I pray that you can touch the hearts of men and women. Let them be able to love one another. Because Jesus told his disciples, if you want to know who is the greatest law in the Scripture, he repeated, he said, "You must love the Lord God with your whole heart, mind, and soul." And the second is like an amid. Love your neighbor as you love yourself. And when we do that, all the other laws hangs on love. And, Father, we realize that we need love in this country. We need love in the world. Because, Father, there's so much chaos. And, Father, I want to lift that up before you. I want to lift the young men's and men's up. They don't really have a course. They don't really have a purpose, it seem like. But, Father, we ask you to give them strength, to let them know that everything will be all right if they keep their hands in God's hand. And be able to be able to make good decisions about their lives. And, Father, we thank you. There's young ladies don't have nowhere to stay. They don't know where the next meal coming. But, Father, we ask you to just do a supernatural thing. And, Father, we realize that we are the people. And he said upon his word, "If my peoples that are called by my name, if they will honor themselves and confess of their sins, I will hear from heaven and I will heal their land." And, Father, we realize that this land need healing. And, Father, we realize now we are going into this session. And, Father, we ask you to just hold us and hold the commissioners, that they may be able to make sound decisions. Decisions that maybe someone will not understand. But, Father, we let you know that everything will be all right if we just keep our hands in God's hand. We thank you, Lord. We thank you for your love, your mercy, and your tender grace. We thank you now. We thank you for this coming here. We thank you for traveling grace. And, Father, we ask us to do this. We're going to give you all the honor and all the praises truly belongs to you, our Sabbath prayer. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the land and the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'll ask our county clerk now, Ms. Smithy White, if she will call the role for the commissioners.
I being Ms. Smithy White, President and Clerk of the Board of Commissioners of Bullock County, hereby call the role for those on the governing body. All those present shall answer by saying aye. Chairman Roy Thompson. Vice Chairman Ray Mosley.
Aye.
Commissioner Anthony Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Kurt Deel.
Aye.
Commissioner Jaffe Stringer. Commissioner Timmy Rushing.
Aye.
And Commissioner Toby Connor.
Aye.
I've determined that we have five members of the Board of, six members of the Board of Commissioners present. Therefore, we have a quorum to conduct business for the good of the citizens of Bullock County. I now give the floor back to the chairman.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Before I entertain a motion to approve the general agenda, do we have any other discussion of modifications desired by the county manager or the board?
Will the chairman yield the floor to the county manager, please?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, everybody. We're only going to ask the board for one modification to the general agenda this evening. And we would like to defer the executive session regarding real estate to the meeting on the 19th because the county attorney could not be present this evening. So other than that, we have no, no further changes recommended.
All right, commissioners. Then I will ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the general agenda with the deletion, deletion of the executive session.
Second. Have a motion, second, enter discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, show of hands. Unanimous approval. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. We have 12 items on the consent agenda, and we're going to bypass the reading of those tonight. But if you have any one of these that need to be singled out and put under the, under new business, we can certainly do that. Or if you want to vote on them collectively, we can certainly do that.
Mr. Chairman, if it pleases the board, I'd like to take number three out. Put on new business, please, sir.
All right. We'll move number three under new business. Anything else? Then I'll ask for a motion. We're moving number three. That leaves 11 items to vote on, so if there's nothing else, then I'm going to ask for a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion, second, enter discussion. Hearing none, all of those in favor of the motion, show of hands. Unanimous approval. Thank you very much. Now, we have one item left from last meeting, and we had it listed under. Now, let's go ahead and do this. I'm going, I'm going, we're going to go ahead with the, with the new business, and that was item number three. Trying to get ahead of myself. And do we have a presentation on item number three? All right, Mr.?
Good evening. Robert Siemens, Public Works Assistant Director. The three vehicles that are listed on the agenda item are the 250 pickup trucks for our transportation division. We originally had put these out for bid. We only got one bid back. With the bid, there were a lot of items that could not be met on the particular truck. The main one was the bed that we wanted on the truck. In doing so, we did contact the company to see if there were any modifications that could be allowed. They said no, that Ford had changed the 150 to where you could not get the extended cab with the larger bed. In doing so, we went back and looked at the availability. The 250s will give us the bed that we're needing and the bed length. By moving it to the 250, we did, were able to go to the Georgia State bid contract, and were able to secure pricing there.
So the reason, basically the reason why we just change in here is because Ford just doesn't make that Pacific model with, with the, with the, with the longer bed for all the stuff we need.
Yes, sir. That was the main reason. There were some other things that it could not meet also, but that was the main reason. We had to move to the 250s that still offer that bed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Robertson. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any questions? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion on item number three.
Will you approve, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, enter discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, show of hands. Unanimous approval. Thank you very much. Under old business, we're going to ask County Engineer Brad Deel to come up and discuss this, and this was closure of a portion of County Road Number 1082, also known as Jones
Brad Deel, County Engineer. So at the November 7th meeting, this was originally proposed, this road abandonment of Jones Road from Highway 67 to Lawrence, Lawrence Church Road. And it was the, the entire road length was on the original proposed road abandonment. And we heard from some citizens that are, some property owners, that had some concerns with the entire length of the road being abandoned. So in light of that, I believe the applicant, Mr. Jones, has had some discussions with the property owners. And the county attorney left me a note that he spoke with one of the property owner, or one of the property owners that had concerns, which was Senova's Trust, and that they were not opposed to revising the abandonment to only part of the road where their ingress and egress would, would be in the part that's still open. So from what I understand, and I, and I think Mr. Jones is here to answer any questions, the part of the road to be abandoned has been shifted so that basically about a half mile from Lawrence Church Road will stay open. So that would include the church, and it would also include this property that Senova's Trust owns as well is in that part. So if there's any other questions on it, let me know.
All right.
I represent one of the landowners that has claims on Jones Road. I'll put my name on the sheet to make a comment now, please.
This is public comments.
John Hurlibus.
Normally, the person that is presenting the petition will speak first, and you'll speak after him, and then he can rebut. Each one, each side has 10 minutes. So, Mr. Jones, if you'd come up now.
I let, I gave y'all all some maps. The first map is the tax website. I had to put two maps together because the timber company had split their property in half, so they're going to have frontage on both dirt roads. There are three roads that connect Highway 67 to Lawrence Church Road, all within a mile of each other. Top road's a paved road, two bottom ones are dirt road. On the bottom road, they have road frontage. On the middle road, which I'm trying to close at my property line, they have a survey point. If you'll flip to the second sheet, that's their loading dock, and that's the survey line that I drew in with a silver marker. The reason that I want to close it is I'm having all kind of problems that are not unique. I'm having trespassers, poachers, and people dumping trash on my property. The only person that this is going to affect closing it, where I want to close it on my property, is me and my brother. We're the only two people that live on that dirt road. And I'll sit down and speak after him.
Now you can come up.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, good evening. I'm John Hurlibus. I work for American Forest Management. I spoke last month. We, we manage timberland for various clients that own timberland, including Southbound Timberlands. They asked me to return tonight and again expressed their opposition to the closure of any portion of Jones Road because they believe doing so will adversely affect their ability to manage their timberland, to efficiently get their timber products to market, and possibly decrease the appraised value of their tract of land. They feel that if the, their frontage is at the dead end of a road rather than a through road that goes straight to a paved state highway could result in a lower property appraisal in the future. And in timberland, investing, you know, asset value is, is very important. Also, timber harvesting, the most recent harvest involved pine pulpwood, which went easterly toward Lawrence Church. The paper mills are on the coast. However, there are mills west of the tract. For example, a pole yard in Glenville, sawmill in Hazelhurst. So in future harvests with larger timber products, it would be the most sensible way, the shortest, most direct route to get some of those larger products to market for the timber to come out west on Jones Road to Highway 67 rather than looping around to the east and increasing the mileage to get to market. So from the standpoint of concerns about asset valuation and efficiently managing harvesting and delivering timber products to markets, Southbound Timberlands continues to be opposed to the closure of any portion of Jones Road. I met with John after the meeting the other night, or the last meeting, and where I have that black dot.
Mr. Jones, would you let me? We've got somebody that signed up on another sheet that just.
Mr. Johnson, Herman Johnson, did you want to speak on the road?
No, just thank you.
Okay.
That's all. Now, Mr. Jones.
The center road is the road that we're talking about. The black dot that I put on that center line is basically my property line. And I met with John after the meeting last month. And the reason the dot is there is that night, he told me he didn't have a problem with closing that part of the road because all the timber moved out to the right of that loading dock to hit the closest hard road to head to the mills. And that's the way that the traffic has always flown from that timber place. And that's, that's the closure that I approached the church with. I still say it's a survey point that they own on that dirt road. Everything to the left belongs to me. Everything to the right belongs to the Copelands, which is in a trust. There's a small section of that road up near Lawrence Church where the church itself is located at. They own a very small section of that road. They have no problem with the road closures. Nobody that lives down there, I've talked with everybody, nobody has a problem with me closing that road at my property line. When John never did call me back, and then when I got ahold of him, he told me that they need the entire road. I tried to look up the timber company to talk with them. I found their building up in New Hampshire. It's that third sheet with the little X on the roof. That small building holds Southbound Timber Company LLC, a foreign liability company, and 49 other companies that deal with land. The last paper that I put on this stack is just a load of trash that I picked up out of my field when I started this process and knew that I'd be coming to see y'all. That's just typical of what I'm finding down there on my property. I've never called the county to remove any trash or deal with anybody that I run into down there. I've always dealt with it myself. I'm just trying to get a solution to the problem that I'm having because it's getting If you don't understand something about the photographs that I've laid up there in front of you, I'd be happy to explain anything. The reason that the, the two bottom roads where I stopped those silver markers is that that's their property line. They have frontage on that bottom road. But they split that track in half so they can claim property on both dirt roads. The only thing they have on my road, John says, is a loading dock. He's correct, they did put a loading dock in there, but it's a survey point. It's a big pine tree that I measured five yards on the other side of the dirt road, and it cuts back across the dirt road at an angle. It's so tight in there that the logging crew, when they were doing a thinning, I went down there and talked to them a few times, asking if they could stage some equipment in our fields, which are just to the left of their property. The only thing they wound up putting there was a log trailer, but they didn't eat, they just, there was no room there. It is a loading dock, and you can load timber there. But it is not like they own property on that dirt road. I have never seen them on that dirt road. I've never seen anybody from New Hampshire with this limited liability company on my road. Nobody uses that road. The mail service has never used it. The school bus has never used it. Even the people that live in the area don't use it. Nobody at the church told me that they ever use that dirt road. Nobody uses it, except people that, you know, want to come down and misbehave on my property.
How about these one, two, three, four, five, say, looks like fields that are joined that road?
Those are mine.
Those are yours?
Yes. We planted pecan trees, and that big opening area to the left, we got fields on both sides of that road. We planted pecan trees in there. Now we got four-wheelers showing up, using them for a racetrack. The last group that I dealt with was three grown men out of Pembroke, Georgia, because there's a dirt road from Pembroke all the way to Lawrence Church Road, and they came all the way over there to my pecan fields to act up. I didn't call anybody. I went down there and dealt with it. I've never dealt with the same people twice. But there's a lot more of them than there are of me. And it's getting worse every year.
Any other questions? Any questions for Mr. John over there?
If I could say one more thing, I'll sit down.
No, you, you still got three minutes.
I don't want to take up all your time. I will say that, that if y'all do approve my request and give me permission to solve my problem, I won't do a thing until I get with Dink Butler and work it out with Dink to make sure everything is like it's supposed to be. My problem didn't start yesterday, and it's not going to end tomorrow. Thank y'all for your time.
All right. Any questions or any thoughts? Then I'm going to call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I know how frustrating this can be. I deal with a lot ourselves out in corners of the county. We deal with a lot of this trespassing and just being, and it's getting worse and worse, especially on our older citizens. So therefore, I move, I made the motion to move forward with the road closure.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, show of hands. Unanimous approval that the road will be closed. Thank you. We next on our agenda, we have the public comments, and we have several people that have signed up to speak. And as your name is called, if you'll come up and I guess repeat your name, give us your address, and then the clock will start, and we'll have five minutes for each person to speak.
I brought another guest to speak with me at the same time. My name's, first of all, thank you for hearing us tonight. My name's Don Armel. My address is 111 Old Town Drive, Statesboro, Georgia.
And I'm Kathy Albertson, and I live 1611 Harvest Way in Statesboro.
So we've come here tonight to discuss the Memorial Park Master Plan and pickleball. And first, I want to thank you for the work that you've done with the players to get the courts resurfaced and have six pickleball courts there that used to have none. That's been a great improvement for us as a group of players. Currently, we have 60 to 70 people play daily at this court, at the courts. Our pickleball app, yes, there is such a thing, has 280 members in it. And just last week, Grice Connect, thank you, Dwayne, had an article about the courts there. And at this time, we have a small contingent of pickleball players, a few folks, pickleballers, stand up. Just a couple friends.
Small group.
No pressure. The game, the game is growing greatly because of your help. And quite honestly, at night, it is, we have outgrown the facilities because people are waiting to play. So six courts has actually become small at night. During the day and the morning is great, but not enough then. And all I could say is that's a testament to the success of the courts being there. You're helping us in growing this sport. Kathy?
Yes. And we saw the, the plan on the, the county plan for the park downtown. And the plan shows four courts in the plan. And so the concerns we have are three that I just want to state what those concerns are. Maybe the four courts is wrong. We'd, we'd love to know how many, since our evenings and weekends are literally people standing waiting for their turn. So if we go to four, we, we don't know what we're going to do to accommodate so many people that are already waiting. We also, during the time that this beautiful park is being created, we need to know where we'll be able to play. There's a couple dozen of us who regularly join and medal in tournaments around the state, and so we need a place to practice. We have, originally in 2021, we played out at Mill Creek on the two taped courts. But even then, if there are tennis matches, we're not allowed to play pickleball. So we really, we need a place to play. So we're just wondering how that could be accommodated for us during this planning time. And related to that, then, is we're not sure who we can talk to about pickleball and the, and the planning of it. We'd love to support in any way we can future plans because it is a. We'd love to support in any way we can future plans, because it is a very popular sport. And again, Dublin's going to have over four hundred people next weekend playing pickleball in a tournament. We went to Dublin two weeks ago, and they had a hundred-and-fifty people playing there. So we know it's something that's great for Bullock County, and it's certainly been great for the community. It's wonderful. You don't see many, but it's fun when our senior people play with the college kids and the high school kids. So our concerns are just those three, really, is we hope there'll be enough courts to accommodate. We hope there'll be a place for us to stay playing while these are being built and our six are being removed, and if we could be connected to someone that we could meet with regularly, I guess, to help keep us moving forward with pickleball.
Will the chairman yield the floor, please?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Ms. Albertson, Mr. Armel. I'm not aware of any county plan to do anything differently with pickleball courts at this time. Could you shed some light on the information, how you gained such information?
The Statesboro Herald posted a plan for the park that's going to be built down near Honey Bowen.
Herald, uh-huh.
Yes, sir. And it's, I don't know what to say about it, other than it was a public plan.
The place where they have pickleball courts, it shows what appears to be only four courts. And we're already, like I said, we're playing on six courts now, and at times, that's not enough.
Where our courts are now, the plan shows that it's going to be restrooms and things like that, and where the pool was covered over, that's where they want to put the pickleball courts, which is four from what the map showed.
In an effort to try to give you a little bit of direction, first of all, that's not the county's plan. That's a plan developed by the city of Statesboro and their consultants, because frankly, outside of part of the Honey Bowen building, that half of the Honey Bowen building is the only thing the county really owns on the property. All the other assets are in possession of the city of Statesboro. Now, we certainly don't want to get out-pickled by Dublin, but that one was for the Assistant County Manager, that's your hometown. But Mr. Eddie Cannon, who's our Parks and Recreation Director, I'm quite sure that he may share your concerns if he's aware of that plan, because he has educated me over the last few months on how popular pickleball is. So I'm sure he may even be here this evening. If you get a chance to stick around, maybe you can have a sidebar, but, you know, we're more than willing to listen to your concerns, but I just wanted to lend some clarity that that wasn't the county's plan. But we are aware that pickleball is a growing sport, and whether it's four courts or six courts, demands outstripping supply. And I'll yield the floor back to the chairman. Thank you.
And I concur. I know, I've talked with a lot of pickleball players, and that's going to become more popular than the Atlanta Braves. Now, seriously, though, it's not, but it is, you can't hardly get a court down there. And I know there's a major need, but I'll agree with Tom, and I know he's not fixing to leave because I'm watching, Mr. Eddie Cannon is in the audience tonight, so Eddie, if you'll talk with him and shed some light if we have some plans. And this is what it's all about, is bringing concerns that possibly we didn't know about. But we do know, we agree with you, how important pickleball is to all ages, particularly, I know y'all aren't yet, I am. Senior citizens love pickleball.
Yes, we are.
Yes, we are.
Well.
Pickleball keeps us young, though.
But we appreciate y'all coming tonight.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
We came because Parks and Rec is under your purview, and that's why we started here.
Yes, sir.
And we know that we'll have to go to the city as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Leisha Neville.
Good to see you again. I'm Leisha Neville. I live at eighty-two Shaq Road, Register, Georgia. The last time I spoke, I talked about all of us working together. I talked about that we're all part of Bullock County, and we need to all work together, and we need to not have all of this arguing, we need communication. I still believe that. Actually, some things happened last week that make me believe it even more, so I'm coming to you tonight. I'm not going to sit here and debate the benefits or the negative parts of Facebook. It's here, that's what it is. My page was attacked by friends of one of yours, and, you know, I've not seen personal attacks against you. I've heard that there are some out there. I also told you at that meeting that the only person I had publicly said anything about was being disappointed in one commissioner, and I also apologized to him. Not because I said anything bad about him, I just said I was disappointed. But I take offense when, and by the way, it also makes you look bad when your friends are sitting there acting like stupid, and everybody knows that they're your friend. It really doesn't, you know, show very well for you. However, one of the points that was brought up, and that I took offense to, and so therefore, I'm bringing it to you, because we are having a battle here, I realize this, we are on sides, we have different things going on. But I still say that we can all work together to solve the problems. I still say communication is what's important, and I do appreciate the fact that, yes, we're having a water meeting next week, and so people can go to that. But, and I'm not going to quote, because if I quote, then I may have to give the person's name, but the people who come and speak to you were attacked, as far as, and I use the word attacked because that's what it is in my opinion, that they're going to the meetings very close-minded. They're only hearing what they want to hear, and that they make up their mind before they get to the meetings, and before asking their questions, and don't want to hear the answer. Okay, well, my problem with that is, you do not answer. And I'm not being ugly about this, but my point is, and I answered this, is there any way that y'all would consider maybe some public forums to where you could communicate back? Because I know people come in, they ask questions, and, you know, I watched one meeting where I wasn't here because I was sick, and, you know, there were questions asked, but nobody answered the questions. And I mean, I've seen that happen several times. I'm not sure if you're not allowed to answer questions, if you choose not to answer questions, if it's just not a good idea not to answer questions. I don't know the reasoning behind it. Obviously, that's why you're sitting there, and I'm standing out here, because I do not know all of the rules. But I'm coming to you to ask for some public comments, some communication between all of us, even if you have just like your little area, and you have like a little town meeting or whatever you want to call it, I mean, I know they call them different things, where you sit down and talk to people. Because people really, they feel like they're not heard, and, or that nobody cares, and I don't really believe that that is the truth. I believe that some of you really do care about the people you represent. I know some of you. I don't think that you just go home and, you know, we finish here, and you just say, huh, well, that meeting's over with, let's move on. I cannot believe that you sitting there, that you really believe that. So that's what I'm coming to you with, is that if you could try to think, or if we could try to come up to some opportunities where people could talk, not fight, not call names, not any of that, but just have more communication, to where people feel more comfortable, and they feel like somebody's listening to them. You might not can do what they ask. Good Lord, I taught school for thirty years. I certainly couldn't do everything that everybody wanted me to do, but I could listen. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and, you know, sometimes, I'm gonna make one comment. Sometimes you're hesitant to answer a question if you don't know it's the right answer.
I can understand that.
You can be given fifty-nine answers to a question, and I, for one, is not going to answer a question. One occurred is what the percentage of tax increase there was going to be. My answer was, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know what your tax increase was, I know what mine was. Everybody's property is taxed differently. So until... We advertise meetings. We have not had any private meetings, even with the land that's being developed down in the Brooklyn area. That was all advertised, but nobody shows up to those meetings. I'm going to suggest you do this, come to those meetings, because that's where it's all discussed at. And, but I, for one, and I think the other commissioners would also say thank you for coming up and, you know, and addressing the issues, and, you know, if we cannot one-hundred percent guarantee you this is the right answer, and we can't answer the question, I'm going to get off of this, but EPD, we're having the Water Council meeting, I think it's next week. Come to it. Don't depend upon Facebook to tell you what was said. Come to the meeting and hear it with your own ears. And that's not a commissioner meeting. That, if it was a commissioner meeting, then we would be running it. We are not running it, it's the Water Council. And that's what it come to, is those meetings. So they will be advertised, they will, go on the Bullock County website, and you'll see when those meetings are occurring. But we certainly appreciate your coming.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would say this, we have had town hall meetings in the past, in all of the municipalities, and we had very, very few participation from the citizens that we had the town hall meetings in. We will continue doing this, but, you know, we can come, and that's more like a sit-down, and you can ask any question you want, and we will answer. But we have had these meetings, and we had very poor attendance in just about all the municipalities that we've been to.
Any other comments?
I'll just make a comment. As far as the Water Council meeting next week, like Chairman said, it's not a commissioners' meeting, so I will be going as a citizen to get answers that we don't know yet from EPD. So I just want to make that clear, that if you see me there, I'm there as a citizen, and also elected official representing everybody in this room, if you're here from Bullock County. But I will be going to get to listen and take notes on what EPD, because we don't know anything yet. And that's, I mean, that's straight-up honest truth. So I'll see you next week, next Thursday.
Anyone else? All right, next.
Herman Johnson.
I'm not going to step up to the mic.
No, we do need you.
Do need you?
Yes, sir, because everybody here needs to hear you.
My name is Herman Johnson. I'm going to step up here. You answered my question when you referred to the water meeting. That was my question you referred, you answered it until when it was going to be, it was going to be open, and I'm good with that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Lawton Sack.
My name is Lawton Sack. I thank you again for this opportunity. I'm gonna piggyback off of Ms. Neville's speaking about communication, especially with what's going to happen next Thursday. While the water meeting's going on, the Planning and Zoning Committee will be meeting at the same time in this room. And I come here after previously requesting that the unapproved minutes for the Planning and Zoning to be put on the website prior to the county commission meetings. Spoke with Attorney Jeff Akins at the last Planning and Zoning Committee, and he felt like that that request could not be fulfilled. So in place of that, he said, because they're not approved, that they cannot go up on the county's website. So I would like to come and request that the Planning and Zoning meetings be broadcast the same way that the county commission meetings are, for a couple of factors. The first is so that citizens that cannot attend that meeting, whether they're at a water meeting or have other obligations, can go back and watch that. The other part is for the commissioners to be able to come and watch it themselves. I've been impressed by the work that the Planning and Zoning Committee's been doing, the questions that they are asking under the leadership of Chairwoman Marsh. They, as I said, are doing a tremendous job, asking the tough questions, and I think it will also alleviate some of the questions that are being asked by the county commissioners, if the public as a whole can go back and listen and really see what's being presented prior to the commission meetings. Right now, we either have to attend those in person, or we have to come to the county commission to ask questions of y'all, that y'all may not even know the answer to, because they were asked in a Planning and Zoning meeting. So I really think it'll be a benefit to y'all, to the citizens of this county, if we start broadcasting those. Obviously, we have the technology to do that. I realize James Pope may need some assistance at those meetings to make that happen, but I think this is a reasonable request that can be easily met by the county, but one that will make a great impact upon it. Thank you.
And Cassandra Michael.
Hello, I'm Cassandra Michael. I live at 2069 Pine Mount Boulevard. Commissioner Simmons, you made some very strong statements at the conclusion of the November seventh meeting, saying you have never seen what you have seen over the past two or three months, and that if we want to talk to you, then talk to you with respect without theatrics, and that you will then listen. However, I think it's clear that there needs to be a better understanding, kind of like what Leisha was saying, between the commissioners and the citizens you represent, and the shift and the tone of the citizens over the last few months. Mr. Simmons, I personally requested a meeting with you via email on July 31st, which was one entire week before the first taxpayer hearing, and three weeks before the millage rate vote. My email read, "Mr. Mosley and Mr. Simmons, I have grave concerns about my neighborhood Pine Mount and the impact that the proposed property tax increases will have on me and my neighbors. I have calculated property taxes for every single house, which was seventy-nine houses in my neighborhood, and on average, there was a forty-eight percent increase. My neighborhood is mostly comprised of working-class families. They do okay, but a forty-eight percent increase is definitely going to impact their family's finances. I would like to set up a meeting to show you the numbers myself and the direct impact these increases will have on families in your district. Sincerely, Cassandra Michael," with my phone number. Frankly, I think that that was a very respectful email. Mr. Mosley made arrangements to meet with me, and we met respectfully for a very long time. Thank you, sir. He was extremely courteous and even gave me a tour of his plant after our meeting. "Mr. Simmons, my email received no response from you. You had three weeks to hear my concerns, and you didn't. You didn't make an effort, so I apologize for not feeling heard by someone who was supposed to represent me. The shift you were talking about is directly correlated to the budget property tax millage rate increase. I spoke at the June 20th budget hearing and at the taxpayer hearings. And, Mr. Simmons, I believe those of us at those hearings did..." And, Mr. Simmons, I believe those of us at those hearings did speak to all of you with respect. Do I believe the commissioners treated us with respect? No, I do not. While dozens of people signed up to speak against their taxes going up, we had a sheriff yell at us and threaten us with jail if we spoke out of line. Mr. Couch was paraded out to say that you basically had to increase our taxes, and to me, it seems that you valued one opinion over the, which was Mr. Couch's, over the citizens that you represent. So of course, people are going to be frustrated when they don't feel listened to. Those three meetings, many in our community told you that, told you that, told you folks up there to not raise our taxes, and then you all unanimously raised our taxes anyway. Do I believe that all of you read all those pages in the budget? No, I do not. If you're listening to us, representing us, the citizens you're supposed to represent, then there's absolutely no way that that vote should have been unanimous. After that unanimous vote, I personally felt that none of you were or are representing the citizens you're supposed to represent. These repeated unanimous votes prove that you're not representing the citizens you're supposed to represent, thus, the shift that you were talking about. So yes, in the last few months, the attitude in this room has changed, and you are directly responsible for that shift. And on a separate note, going to all of that, I believe the town hall meetings, because of this change in attitude of the county, because of all the changes coming to the county, I believe that hopefully, hopefully, those town hall meetings would be better attended. Thank you.
Any comments? In hearing none, we certainly appreciate each one of y'all that spoke tonight. And we're going to move on, next to staff comments, to staff members.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one quick reminder that our employee appreciation Christmas lunch is next Friday at the Ag Arena, so just wanted you to make sure that's on your calendars. Thank you.
This Friday?
Next Friday.
This Friday.
I'm sorry, this Friday.
He was just double-checking. Pass. Commissioners, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to tell everybody thank you in the county and on this board and everywhere else for the prayers that they have sent up for my family. They are not gone unnoticed, and everything is moving forward, it's just taking one step at a time. But I do appreciate all the phone calls and all the people that's been sincerely concerned. And don't forget about Mr. Jappy and his mother-in-law.
Anyone else? Then hearing none, we are not going into executive session. It is now time for adjournment, and as for a motion to adjourn. Motion, second discussion, hearing none, all's in favor of motion. Show of hands, meeting is now adjourned. Thank you. And thank you.